If you're there, I'd be you for the next year.
So in the army they used to give us little posters like this, so if we were drunk, we knew who to just go down the list. You're at, you're at the top, you're at the top.
Wanda Davis, uh, there's a couple left.
Well, that's not very hard. I asked for your regional office, etc., so.
So, I figured when, uh, sunglasses make it all.
Okay, I'm good to go.
I'm ready.
But it poses questions.
Good evening, everyone. Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order.
Brooks.
Here.
Jacobs.
Here.
Holmberg.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
Lund.
Here. Approval of minutes from last time.
Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes. Adoption of tonight's agenda?
Who to adopt?
Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Next up, we have a presentation, a proclamation for National Preservation Month. And so, we have three proclamations that we're gonna read, gonna try and do them early, so if you are a part of the organization or an individual pertaining to that, please come forward, uh, so that we can have you available for a photo. Alright, so we have a National Preservation Month proclamation, and I'm going to read that. National Preservation Month proclamation, whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character. And whereas, the city of Warrensburg became a, became a certified local government in 2008. And whereas, since 2008, the Historic Preservation Commission has completed a cultural resource study, multiple property documentation form, and listing of the Grover Street Victorian House District and Holden and Pine Streets Commercial Historic District on the National Register of Historic Places. And whereas, Warrensburg is home to two national registered districts, seven individually listed properties, and two local landmarks. And whereas, the Historic Preservation Commission is partnering with Warrensburg Main Street and the Johnson County Historical Society to conduct a walking tour of downtown Warrensburg in recognition of National Preservation Month. Now, therefore, I, Casey Lund, Mayor of Warrensburg, Missouri, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2019 as National Preservation Month in Warrensburg, Missouri, and call upon the residents of Warrensburg to join their fellow citizens across the United States in celebrating, in celebrating the historic resources within our own community and increasing public awareness of the importance of historic preservation dated this 13th day of May 2019. Next, we have a proclamation for National Police Week. Alright, so here we have a proclamation for National Police Week. National Police Week, whereas, National Police Week is the week of May 12th through 18th, and whereas, May 15th has been declared as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and by presidential order, flags are to be flown at half-staff on this day. And whereas, two Warrensburg police officers, City Marshal James Ryan and Officer James Basham, were killed in the line of duty by being shot by a single assailant on April 19th, 1908. And whereas, on average, fifty-nine thousand sixty-nine peace officers are assaulted, sixteen thousand forty-one peace officers are injured, and a hundred and sixty-seven peace officers are killed in the line of duty in the United States each year. In 2018, a hundred and forty-four peace officers were killed in the line of duty. And whereas, peace officers in Warrensburg and our surrounding community bravely serve the public and unselfishly risk life and serious bodily injury. Now, therefore, I, Casey Lund, Mayor of the City of Warrensburg, Missouri, do hereby commend our peace officers, recognize their service to our community, and hereby proclaim the week of May 12th through May 18th as National Police Week, and May 15th as Police Officers Memorial Day in Warrensburg, Missouri dated this 13th day of May 2019. Alright, our next proclamation is for Building Safety Month. Just Brett Harv, or you coming up also? Just Brett, alright. Lone Ranger. So here's a proclamation, so Building Safety Month. Whereas, the city of Warrensburg's continuing efforts to address the critical issues of safety, energy efficiency, and resilience in the built environment that affect our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster, give us confidence that our structures are safe and sound. Whereas, Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role our communities largely unknown guardians of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us safe, efficient, and livable buildings. And whereas, this year's theme for Building Safety Month is No Code, No Confidence. It encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, and new technologies in the construction industry. Building Safety Month 2019 recognizes that the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies has saved lives and protected homes and businesses. And now, therefore, I, Casey Lund, Mayor of the City of Warrensburg, Missouri, along with the other members of the city council, do hereby proclaim May 2019 as Building Safely, Safety Month in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. And call upon our citizens to pay special tribute to the building officials that contribute to the safety and well-being of our city dated this 13th day of May 2019. Alright, and next, we have a presentation from Missouri American Water Company report on water main replacement presentation by representative from Missouri American Water.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to speak to you tonight. Uh, my name is Matt Barnhart. I am the general manager for Missouri American Water, the southwest section for the company. Uh, brought Dave with me, and of course, he's your, uh, local manager. And our goal tonight is just to tell you about some of the capital spend that we'll be doing this year, uh, for your water system. Uh, we have two wells that we're doing, uh, pretty extensive work on, to the tune of about three hundred thousand dollars of the work. Also additional to the mainline projects that we have, this year, we'll be spending about a million five on infrastructure replacement. So, uh, let Dave tell you a little bit more in detail about those specific projects. But, uh, the projects, I, I actually used to work here, this is where I started my career in 2000. And, uh, this was a project that we wanted to do clear back then. But, uh, it's come up on the, the list now to be done, and it's actually has fire hydrants that are fed about four inch. Back in the day, when they were installed on, on the four inch, that was, that was top notch. Now, that would be seen as, as something that we would not even allow. So, that will be replaced with eight inch, and I'll turn that, turn that over to Dave and let you tell him a little bit about it.
There's three main projects we have this year. Gay Street's gonna be the most involved that we have, uh, due to a lot of the traffic and it's, you know, it's, uh, a high-used area. It's gonna be, um, challenging, to say the least. Uh, we will be installing a twelve-inch main from McGuire all the way down to Holden. Uh, this is gonna improve the fire flow tremendously, uh, increase ISO ratings. Um, I'm really curious to see the results, cause it's been a, uh, a weak, uh, point for a long time. College Street was also, it has an old two-inch line that used to run it down it, we're replacing it too, and this is gonna increase flows. Uh, eventually, we'll be extending the twelve-inch on down to an existing twelve on Gay Street. This is gonna increase, uh, the hydraulic flows to the towers, being able to move water around through the system, uh, much easier. Also, we have, we've already started one on, uh, Anderson Street, two years ago, we did Tyler. This year, Anderson Street, we're going from, uh, Maserati to, uh, Tenth Street Terrace. Uh, this is, uh, we're replacing the six-inch old cast iron with an eight-inch, uh, ductile iron main. This is also gonna improve hydraulics, uh, throughout the system. Eventually, we'll be, uh, working our way all the way to Mitchell, tying into a ten-inch main and a twelve-inch main that's, uh, on the other end of, uh, uh, Maserati. So, that's gonna be a good improvement in that area. And then, the, uh, final one that we have is for main replacements, gonna be on Grandview from PCA to Aspen Way. Uh, we were in there two years ago on Woodlawn and replaced a section of that. This year, we're gonna replace a six-inch main with an eight-inch main, that's gonna increase the flows in that area. Uh, it's gonna help quite a bit. We've had, uh, several main breaks in that area and causes a lot of problems, so that, uh, that's gonna be a big improvement there. And then, we're also doing some, uh, dead-end mains that we've had, we're looping those, uh, over in front of the Elks Lodge, we'll be looping a twelve-inch main through there. And eventually, uh, work that twelve-inch main all the way down to, uh, Burkhardt, helping the flows in that area. So, these are some of the projects that we have coming up. Uh, like Matt was saying, as far as the wells go, uh, a couple year, well, last year, we did well seven, we put in a submersible, this increased our yield by, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty gallons a minute by doing this, it also, uh, makes it, uh, more reliable. So, we're also doing six, well six and well eight this year. Uh, well eight was, uh, the problem with it, it was out in the open all the time, we could only use it, uh, during the warmer months, because the way it was set up, it could freeze in the wintertime, we couldn't operate it. So, by doing these submersible wells, we can operate them year-round, so that's gonna, uh, make the system more redundant for us, and a lot better yields. These are some of the things that, uh, were coming on this year, and we've got a lot of stuff in the future coming up, so we're, we're working hard to replace a lot of these old mains, increase fire flow, and, uh, make the system more reliable, and try not to blow up so many streets.
Any questions for us? We're gonna leave the drawing with you, so you have that.
You know, we're being, meeting with the contractor, we're gonna get a, uh, in Slim too. Uh, we'll be going over, getting a, a plan on how we're gonna work the traffic and, uh, make sure this goes as smooth as possible. Like I said, Gay Street's gonna be a challenge, just because of the, uh, the use, so, but we're gonna do our best for that, stay on top of that and make sure we're doing it right.
Try to minimize the inconvenience, but the, the outcome is, it propels us to the, to where we wanna be, fire flows and water quality.
What's your timeline for completion for Gay Street?
We're hoping by, uh, at, at the latest, uh, end of September, we're shooting for the first September, uh, we're gonna push it pretty hard on.
The whole project?
Yep.
Would you be beneficial if I done before school?
Yes, that's, that's the plan, that's the plan.
That'd be ugly, that's down August and September.
It's got all the Anderson and College and all that.
Can I ask a question about the wells?
Sure.
Uh, so, the aquifer in this area, has it been pretty stable, or have we seen it fluctuate, go down, rise?
The aquifer will, will fluctuate, uh, the great part about it is we have a, a really reliable aquifer. Um, it's very high in hydrogen sulfide, but, uh, the amount of water is...
The volume it produces is...
The volume is great.
It has a great recovery, it's, uh, very porous, so it, it, good recovery time, and, and we checked, uh, with other wells nearby, the drawdowns and everything, and it, it does seem, it does a real good job.
Great, thank you, gentlemen, thanks for the update. Alright, next, we'll move to a public hearing on an ordinance annexing certain adjacent territory into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at the southwest corner of 141 Northwest 21 Road, adjacent to Holden Street.
Mayor and city council, this is a very small triangular-shaped tract of land at the southwest corner of the property located at 141 Northwest 21 Road. That larger tract of 141 Northwest 21 Road is about two-twenty-five acres in size, and it was annexed into the city in 2017. It lies just north of, um, an old trailer park that is just north of, uh, Riprib and that strip mall, just north of the strip mall. So, this, uh, piece of land that we're looking at tonight is one thousand seven hundred fifty-seven square feet, and it is also owned by Elvin Maloney, the same owner as that larger tract that was annexed in 2017. This piece, for some reason, was not in the legal description that was provided at that time, and that was discovered, um, separately by both Maloney and the county assessor's office after the annexation occurred. And so, they have submitted an, an application, uh, to have it, uh, annexed into the city as well as to have it zoned. The zoning application will come forward next month, and you'll have this on your agenda for a second reading. Um, and then, we also have received the paperwork from the county to annex, um, the last piece of Northwest 21 slash Holden Street, um, that, that you see on these maps. Uh, it's just south of this tra, this triangle, but that piece that, of that road that's still held in the city, um, we've received the paperwork last week to have that annexed into the city, so you'll see that coming forward in June as well. Tonight is just a, a small little triangle. Uh, staff would recommend approval consistent with the comprehensive city plan from 2017 as well as 2007.
So, it sounds like it was just a administrative mistake then?
Well, it just wasn't part of the application that was submitted in 2017, wasn't part of that legal description.
The landowners voluntarily brought this forward for a volunteer, uh, annexation.
There were several lots.
Alright, well, nobody has signed up to, uh, to, to speak, uh, during the public hearing for that, so we will close, uh, the public hearing, and move on to first reading, first reading only of an ordinance. Uh, the same ordinance, so first reading of an ordinance annexing certain adjacent territory into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at the southwest corner of 141 Northwest 21 Road, adjacent to Holden Street. And this is just, uh, putting that out there for first reading, and, uh, next time, we will, uh, bring it forward to a second reading, second opportunity for somebody to speak on it, and then, uh, it will become, uh, become illegal at that point. Alright, moving on to first and second reading ordinance. Uh, an ordinance approving a contract with the city of Warrensburg Parks and Recreation Director and City Clerk with D. Peyton Roberts Contracting LLC for the community flat roof repair project.
Honorable Mayor and city council members, um, as you know, the community center has both flat and pitched roofs, and 2014 replaced the pitched roof, uh, with the current metal roofing. Uh, in this budget year, we've allocated, uh, funding for the flat roofs, we have seven flat roofs, and we are going to redo four of them. Uh, and we plan to do the remaining three in fiscal year 2020. We allocated eighty thousand dollars, um, and on May 2nd, we had a bid open, and the lower bid of, um, the two bids that we received was sixty-five thousand one hundred and four. Uh, so we'd like approval to go ahead and, uh, move forward with that contract.
Is there another, is there another step in this, in this bu, build? Is there, cause I see you got sixty-five, then eighty, eighty-three. There's alternative one, alternative two, is there, are there, were those different options they had, or?
Those are the different types of roofing, so the roof that we have is still able to be reused, um, it's still in pretty good condition, even though the building's almost twenty-two years old. Uh, and so, this is a fleece fact membrane that's rubber, and it will just cover our existing roofs, and it'll last about fifteen years.
Any other questions for Danielle? Would entertain, would entertain a motion to move to second reading?
Pass the second reading by title.
Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
This is an ordinance approving a contract with the city of Warrensburg Parks and Recreation Director and City Clerk with D. Peyton Roberts Contracting LLC for the community flat roof repair project. This is for adoption or rejection, Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Alright, moving on to other business. Uh, preliminary plat of Lionsgate lots one through eighty-six, tracks A and B.
Is this a preliminary plat application that's come forward from the applicant Berg Builder Group LLC? They own the twenty-six point seven-three acres that's proposed for development within the plat. The preliminary plat is the first stage in the subdivision process. From here, uh, the city would expect to receive construction documents and construction of the public improvements such as the streets, um, sewers, streetlights, et cetera, will be built. And then, um, at some point, simultaneous to that, or, or after that even, we could receive, uh, final plats for either the whole project, or they could come forward in phases. Uh, those two would come to the city council, the final plats for approval. The preliminary plat, uh, involves eighty-six single-family lots, two tracks, uh, a track A and a track B for stormwater detention and part of the stormwater design, and then it includes six new streets, all of that put in at the expense of the developer. The area where they're proposed to do this is on the west side of Main Street, it's north of Southwest Drive. Um, it is in an area that is owned R1 Single Family Residential, and it is shown in the comprehensive city plan from 2017 as an area for single-family development. It was also shown that way in the 2007 comprehensive city plan and the nineteen-eighty-seven comprehensive city plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this at their meeting on April 1st, they took a substantial amount of public comment. I have summarized those comments in your, uh, staff report, uh, the full minutes of the meeting and not yet have been approved by the P&amp;Z Commission, so those will be made available once the commission's approved them. Uh, but I've bulleted, uh, most of the comments here in your packet. Uh, their vote that evening was to deny the preliminary plat, uh, that was a motion to deny based on eight, uh, seven staff and one additional comments or conditions that were recommended to them at that time. With their vote to not approve, it will trigger, uh, a four-fifth vote in any direction from this body in order to approve the, um, preliminary plat. Since staff's review, uh, and the Planning and Zoning Commission's review, one additional comment condition has been added by staff, that's number nine on the third page of the staff report. Uh, to correct the thirty-foot building setback from Main Street on track A to show a thirty-five-foot building setback, it's shown correctly on the two buildable lots, lot one and fifty-one, but it's not shown on track A that way. Uh, there is other language on the plat that states that no structures are allowed to be built on track A, but, uh, still, we want it to reflect the correct building setback line. Since the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the developers have indicated, uh, to staff that they are willing to comply with all of those conditions, uh, and they can submit a, a clean copy, um, pending action by the city council.
And you will notice that this is under other business, and there was not a public hearing, uh, for this issue, I know a lot of folks are here, uh, specifically for this, so I wanna kinda explain, uh, what's going on legally and where we are to kinda get everybody caught up. So, uh, this was brought forward to planning and zoning, um, and there were conditions that were not met, uh, eight at the time, uh, staff recommended, uh, that they change. Since that time, uh, the developer has agreed to comply, uh, with now nine conditions that have been put upon that. And so, the reason this is not written as an ordinance, uh, and it's brought under other business, is because this is, uh, not a legislative, uh, agenda item. A legislative agenda item is where we, uh, can wear our, our, our hat of what we feel and what we think and what we see is best for Warrensburg and, and what we wish to have. That process is saved for when we are establishing zoning, when we are setting up ordinances, all of those, uh, we have the opinion of the council, that we take the opinion and input from the community, and then enact that into, uh, legal proceedings through ordinances. Uh, this is under our administrative duties, and so, whenever we're looking at a, uh, preliminary plat, we are not looking, uh, to say, do we want this to happen? Do I like this in my backyard? Do I not like this? Is it going to create an issue, whatever? We are looking at this right now, uh, does everything on this preliminary plat, the initial step in the process, does it meet our current ordinances? And so, we're looking at it from that perspective. And so, as we move forward, uh, according to what we're doing here, which is just a, a, a simple approval of a, of a preliminary plat. However, since this has been, uh, an issue of, of great concern for lots of folks, uh, I would like to open up the floor, uh, to some folks, if you would... I would like to open up the floor to some folks if you would like to come forward and talk about what you see as significant concerns for the area. And so whenever I say concerned, so we need to kind of take our legislative hat off and and this is not a time to say what you want or what you hope to see or what is good or bad. We need to look at it from a perspective of, is this legal? Are they checking all the boxes to meet our current codes? And it looks like it has done that, but what is that going to do to the area? What are concerns that you have that we can do something about and and have consideration for in the future as we go about planning, what is, you know, where do we spend the finite resources of the city? And how do we, you know, use those ideas and things from you to to revitalize an area or to bring things to it? And so I just wanted to kind of shape that, that this is not opinion, this is not legislative, it is administrative, and we are looking at it from a, do they check the boxes on all of our current ordinances? And so there is a way that if we choose, we want things to look differently in the future, there is a way to be a part of that conversation. And if you are so inclined, I would encourage you to be a part of that. However, this is specifically to our current ordinances, not for what we want to see in the future. But we hope that many of you are involved in the future of what you'd like it to see. So if anybody has concerns or anything that they would like to bring forward so that we can be made aware of that, please, please do so. Christian, I didn't know if you wanted to?
I'd like to give the opportunity to anyone else and then?
Okay. Anybody have concerns that you see either from the past, that you've seen in that area, around that development, as well as Jim, if you want to come forward, come on up. Please come to, if you want to speak, please come to the podium so that everyone can hear you. And and also anything that you see as a result of, you know, eighty-six additional houses, so.
Well, thank you for allowing us to speak on this issue. And and I wasn't at the Planning and Commission hearing, so I I actually did not become aware of the proposed development until just recently, so I missed that session. I wish I was there. But I guess you do raise a question because the Planning and Zoning Commission apparently rejected this proposal. So I guess I'm curious about that. And the way that you presented it, it sounds like this is for the future rather than present.
For the opinion items, so right now they're operating under the current codes and ordinances that are that are on now. And so it takes time to shape those and change those and that would be for future development. But this one was submitted at the time that it's?
Well, I guess the question is, is this a foregone conclusion that this is going to be approved?
So so we are looking at it from the perspective of solely administrative purpose. So do they, does this plat, everything on it, check the boxes that are necessary that is currently on the books?
Okay.
And so that that's how we're looking at it. This will not be our opinion, it is going to solely be administrative.
Okay, I guess the question is, but based upon the feedback you received tonight and the feedback that the Planning and Zoning Commission received on April the first, are we still in conversation about this particular plan development? Is this, is this a, you said that this is for the future legislative, like you're going to potentially change the?
Yeah, so so if we said, hey, I don't want, you know, I want the lots to be a certain size in the future in the city of Warrensburg. That would not be, it would not be for this proposal because it's only what's on the books now.
Well, so so I guess with all due respect, it sounds like the folks that are here in this room right now, and it's a substantial number, that this is not something suitable for a conversation about this particular proposal and whether or not this city council will approve of this proposal. I'm just trying to make sure I'm correct about that.
Yeah, so so this?
So this proposal is approved.
So it's not approved yet, we still have to vote on it. But whenever we vote, we have to put on our administrative hat. We are, we are looking at it solely from that regard. It is not our opinion of what I think is good or bad for Warrensburg. It is, this is what somebody is allowed to do by law, by their right, by ordinance on their, on a property that they own.
Okay. And you make a distinction between administrative decisions and legislative decisions. Administrative decisions are policy decisions too. So those are, those have impact. So that strict separation is a little bit contestable because you're still making a decision, administrative decision. And while, and I'm sure there's more experts in this room on this particular subject, while this particular development is technically within the particular ordinance that we have for residential homes, it is only by a hair. And the concerns that I think a lot of people in this room have is how this is going to radically change that area. Eighty-six homes, I I live right up the street from there. It is going to have a huge impact. And so I, I don't know, I, you got the zoning, but there's, there's has to be room to say that a particular proposal is so maybe technically within the law, but what is the impact? What is the real impact here? And so I appreciate what the Plan and Zoning Commission did. And I'd be, you know, I wonder why this council would not defer to them, that body in terms of its decision. But just to mention a few things, some people are predicting about two hundred cars in that area. And I don't know if you've walked down that particular road, I do almost every day. It is a dangerous road currently, and I think there was some conversation that some of that's going to change. It's going to have to change rather immediately.
That's why I've opened up this forum is so that you can bring those concerns and that would be a valid concern that we need to be aware of.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
You know, as we're trying to, we have problem areas all over the city, what what is the priority? So please?
Mr. Mayor, I really appreciate you asking us to come up and and express ourselves, I really do. So if you walk down that road, there, basically you step off that road, you're in a ditch. And it's very exceedingly narrow and it's actually a very dangerous road, it really is. And so something, and perhaps you're thinking about it already, is radically going to have to change there. And that's just, just in terms of volume, that, and I am not against development. I'm, I'm in favor of reasonable development. I think the, if you rubber stamp this particular proposal, I think it's going to have a devastating impact of that, on that area down there. So congestion, uh, safety, how about safety? I happen to live on Hillcrest Drive, which currently is used almost as a thoroughfare where students and others speed down that road. I can't even imagine what's going to happen to, because that's going to be the way that people get to those homes. They're not going to go around, they're going to go straight down, either Hillcrest or Jones. And those are areas, as you know, very family-oriented homes in that area. And currently, it's somewhat unsafe in terms of just people, you know, just speeding through that area. And now you're increasing the volume considerably, I think that's going to have a real impact. So safety, South Main's not currently safe, I don't know how anybody can say it is. I mean, it's, it's to walk down that road, you're probably pretty much taking your life in your hands a little bit. You have to, I step off into a ditch when I go down that road. So just in terms of traffic, safety, aesthetics, somebody should probably mention aesthetics. It's a beautiful area down there and that is probably going to change that that area considerably. So there's probably going to be some recommendations here, but perhaps some sort of environmental impact statement for that that size, that number of homes. I think the council is fully, you know, technically within the rules? Is that what we're really talking about here? Technically within the rules?
In this case, we're looking at it from an administrative perspective of, is it fitting within the current laws? In this case, that's why it's not an ordinance and it's under other business.
Then that sounds, that sounds like we're talking about future ordinances.
Yeah, so so the discussion we're having now is going to be possibly things that we would bring forward to another ordinance.
I would like to step in just for a second please, because I'm one of the votes also as a councilwoman. The builders are here, you don't have to direct them, but direct to us, but anyone that has concerns, it could help maybe move a little bit, like you're talking to traffic. They've already talked about widening the road, putting the sidewalks in and such, so those are improvements.
Are the, are the developers going to do that?
Yes. Correct? No.
People that are recognized by the chair may speak, this is not a session for comments from the floor.
Well, I just feel, and I, again, I'll make my, I'll step down because I'm sure that people want to speak, but I do not disfavor development. I don't want to be signed up for that proposition, but I, when I, it just, it just doesn't sound right. Eighty-six homes in that area, it sounds, that sounds like something that's unmanageable in the short run. And I think if you approve this, I think it'll have long-term consequences for this community. If you approve eighty-six homes in that small little area there, it'll have considerable impact on this community. And thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jim. Any question?
Thank you. I, my name is Christian Cutler, I'm the president of the Spring Ridge Homeowners Association, work for the university, I love this town. I too am not against development, our town does need affordable housing, I I acknowledge that. I do want to, I do want to put out the same word of safety. I would hope that safety is not an opinion. South Main Street is a anomaly in our town. It actually is kind of one of the only farm roads left in this town. Not that I want to preserve a farm road, but it is dangerous. And over the last two months, I've witnessed individual runners, fathers with children in strollers, walkers of all ages, students speeding, the road is unsafe. And yes, they will widen part of South Main, but they'll only widen by law, by ordinance, in front of this property. South Main Street runs two thousand two hundred feet long. I have an engineer friend who has set the bottom of the barrel amount to widen a forty-foot right-of-way to sixty-foot, which is what it would require, is around five hundred dollars a foot. So you're really looking at about a thousand dollars a foot. So at two thousand two hundred, you're looking at over two million. Our city doesn't have that kind of money. Our city doesn't have the money to make that street safe. And I almost want to tear up on that because I live there. Lions Lake is one of our gems and I want everybody to enjoy it. But if people can't enjoy it safely and the neighbors can't enjoy their own front yard safely, then we we do have a problem. The other question I have, and it's, and it's a serious question, no opinion about it, and this is directed towards our city councillor, Mr. Harris. Under city code of ordinances, ordinance four-three-seven-five, I'm wondering about some clarification. There are statements in here that talk about the fact that public office not be used for personal gain and that the the public have confidence in the integrity of our government, including, and not singling you out, Mr. Mayor, but the mayor or any other member of city council who has a substantial, substantial personal or private interest by, as defined by law, in any bill shall disclose on the records of city council the nature of his interest and shall disqualify himself from voting on any matters. I'm wondering if having three out of five city council members who are real estate agents who potentially will benefit from selling a house in a large development like this, I'm wondering if that does come up as a conflict of interest or or not.
Well, and the first thing I would ask is, I'm wondering, as we are next door neighbors, as to why you didn't address this question to me before a public session of the city council?
I just learned about this this evening.
What I would say is that though state law and city ordinances prohibit anyone that has a direct financial interest in a project, there are any number of people in in the community who serve in any number of capacities that could be said to indirectly benefit from a development. So the fact that individual voting members of a council might in the future have a hypothetical possibility of being involved commercially with a project after its completion does not amount to a conflict of interest under state law or city ordinance.
Excellent.
Someone, someone that sells paint could have a conflict with any development that's approved in this town. Someone that sells real estate under that question could have a conflict with anything that's developed in this town. Roofers, contractors, people that work for a university that might benefit from additional housing. So that is not a direct conflict of interest.
Excellent, thank you for answering that, that's, that's all I needed. And since I don't, I mean, I could give you opinion all day long, we've, for two months, over five hundred people now, as of this evening, actually I calculated it was around five hundred and twenty-one people have signed a petition against this development. I want to thank everyone who has participated and and voiced their opinion, whether they're for or against. This is a big deal to a lot of people. The character, the the value of this, I, I don't see it and I, anyway, I yield the podium, but I, I appreciate your time and I really appreciate your opportu, the opportunity to speak to you. I know that it's out of the ordinary, thank you.
Thank you, Christian. And anybody else, as you're, you know, sitting there thinking, if you have preferably specific concerns, you know, I have a problem with the width of this street, I have a problem with this intersection, I have a problem with something specific, that's helpful stuff that, we're working through the budgeting process now. So if you can bring those things forward, we can start getting a plan together if there are needed infrastructure improvements. So that's kind of, so try to be be specific if you can.
It's actually a very small question, it's, I'm going to show my ignorance. I assumed if the planning and zoning voted it down, that that would be the end. I don't understand how it continues.
So so planning and zoning, so the council is is kind of the ultimate, we're the ones that are legally responsible. So it kind of, the buck stops with us. So planning and zoning makes recommendations to us, but, you know, the?
It's like a committee or something?
Yeah, the lawsuit is going to name us, kind of thing. And so our decision would basically trump there, or or what they do puts us on the hook. You know, it has to come through us before it it becomes a law in most, in most.
So their recommendation was to not proceed, but you're considering it nonetheless, is that correct?
Yeah, so we, so I?
The council is obligated to take final action on the submission of a plat. The, the action of the Planning and Zoning Committee is advisory, it is an opinion permitted to the council. But the council under our ordinances is the body that must take official action on the submission.
And as I understand it, you have not taken official action yet?
No, no.
However, as I understand it, the developer is getting some, having to do some things to pass all these requirements before it comes to you.
There were eight contingencies and a ninth was added just recently.
If it were me and I were the developer and I went through all, I jumped through all these nine hoops and then I would anticipate that I have met all the requirements and it can go forward. Is that pretty reasonable?
Yeah, but but it's very common for there to be amendments and changes. This is, this is a preliminary plat, so you think of it over a rough sketch before it's coming forward. And so it's very common for there to be recommendations by the city of what they? And so it's very common for there to be recommendations by the city of, of what they ask for. And so it's being presented to us in its original form, the rough sketch, with these changes recommended.
I see. I think you've answered my question, thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, could I get your name, please, for the record?
I'm sorry, Maggie Anderson.
Thank you.
Please come forward. And, and she needs your name, so.
Sorry, thanks for hearing this out. My name's Christopher Meyer. I live on 402 Hillcrest. Same concerns as Dr. Staub said, Main Street. I think the, the city really needs to take a look at that. And same with putting sidewalks out in Hillcrest and Jones, those areas. It's a thoroughfare through there. My, I do have one question. Can it be rezoned before they start construction to stop it?
So R1, which is single-family residential, would be like, you know, as a neighbor, like in my backyard, that would be kind of like the ultimate, you know, the lightest use possible by the city. So it's already zoned R1. It could be R4, which is, you know, is that hotels or is that multi-family? Or, or commercial or, or business. And so that would be less desirable in, in a neighborhood. And so it's already R1.
The landowner, the landowner also would have to request the rezoning.
Okay, no, I was just curious if it was possible. You know, with it all being a conclusion and everything that administratively.
For clarification, it might be helpful to know that the ordinances that apply to this property are frozen at the ordinances that were in place at the time of application.
So, so even if we, if it was, say it was R2 and we wanted it to be R1, it's, it's too late to change that at this point?
So only...
But it's already the lowest.
So only the landowner can ask for it to be rezoned? And actually, what are parks rezoned, what are they zoned as?
Parks?
Yeah, parks.
Parks would be a use that's allowed in multiple zones?
I was just curious, I was just trying to get clarification on it, if it's possible or if anything.
And if somebody wanted to donate that property, they could request the change, the change in rezoning. If neighbors wanted to band together to make sure that this didn't happen somewhere else, there, there is that possibility. And there is a process, but it needs to be done before, you know, it's purchased and, and people are gonna spend money doing engineering and stuff like that.
All right, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Yes?
I'm Dave Glover. I actually live on Gay Street. But I, I just have a question for you, and I'm, I'm not certain about this. And that is if you have a, a development that then requires a significant expenditure by the city, is it reasonable to then transfer that cost to the development? In other words, what we've heard and what you've heard tonight, which is true, is that Main Street is not large enough nor safe enough to have 200, 400 more cars driving on it both directions, because you know they'll drive both directions consistently. Therefore, incurring upon that development is the fact that Main Street is gonna have to be redone. And that's gonna be a very expensive proposal. So it seems to me, one of your options might be to say, yes, you've met all these, but you're, have a certain number of expenses that are gonna be required. And the covering of those expenses by development would be a reasonable request on your part.
I'm not sure if we can legally mandate someone to do that, but I mean, that would be the case in places all over town.
Absolutely.
Somebody, you know, is requesting, like Chris mentioned about, you know, we want sidewalks through the neighborhood. Well, the restrictions on development were much more lenient when they built, you know, your house and my house and anybody in Spring Ridge or Southwest Estates. And that's why, you know, we don't have the mandates that are required under this, and so...
But if somebody is gonna make a development and it incurs a large amount of expense on the city's part, there certainly has to be some mechanism for the city to then charge that person for that development, I would think. Maybe I'm wrong.
I'm not for certain.
There, I mean, theoretically, the thought pattern is, is that as property gets developed going up Main Street, that'll cause those, that'll cause that widen into those areas. So it'll, over time, that will happen as developments happen.
It's gonna be improved in front of that property and you hope that the next property owner agrees the same and does the same, but, you know...
But the road itself, it has to be improved, and that's not somebody's expense, that's not their expense, that's your expense, I think, isn't it?
Traditionally, that's been put on the developer and the landowner. So like how, you know, my streets were added in my neighborhood was by the developer built that and then...
But the street actually goes all the way up and down, not just a short distance.
Looking at the map on the left side, there's three, there's three lots there that look like they probably have single-family homes on them. So if those were to be sold and a developer wanted to turn those into a subdivision, then they would be required to widen the road on that side. Now, on the side of, of Hillcrest and Johnson and those areas, that's already been developed. So the, the chances of there being a requirement ever put on anybody to do anything there would require that whole area to be cleared out, and that's obviously not gonna ever happen.
Well, I, I was just concerned.
Legally, they can, if, if the city can be forced or obligated to do that, that I don't know.
So the city would be forced to make the improvements if, in fact, they're necessary at their own cost?
I, i- if we determine, I, I think it'd be a choice. You know, if we determine that necessary improvements, we, you know, remove out, we're, we're going through budget now, so we take money that was gonna be spent to fix improvements and roads and whatever in another area, and maybe this area gets a priority. So that's why we're asking for the, the public opinion.
You might want to put a little away, guys.
Veterans, I think Veterans Road was done with, with public money to get Veterans Road connected.
Yeah, I know sometimes when they do commercial developments that there are quite a few requirements made for improvements, for access to the, to the commercial developments. So I assumed it might be the same with residential.
I'm not certain. Mary?
My name is Mary Solomon. I want to concur with the comments that have made, been made about South Main Street. There is one area, though, that we haven't mentioned, and that's that intersection between West Clark and South Main. That particular intersection affects all of the residents in that area, whether it's Southwest Estates, the Apartments, Esquire Estates, Fountain Hills, whatever. In addition to the narrowness of South Main that we've already addressed, in addition to the safety factor, that intersection is very, very tricky. And I don't know what can be done in that area, but I think that's part of the improvement that would need to be made. And I don't know who it's incumbent upon, but someone needs to address the safety issue. I don't know that any type of traffic study has been done to even investigate what could be done in that area, but if nobody's done it, I think it's, it's time.
Barb wrote, "One of the things that I've learned as I've talked to people is that an environmental impact study is not a requirement for a developer." And, I mean, I have no idea if this is standard policy. I assumed that that was part of the process, because one of the concerns has been the runoff down into Lions Lake, because Lions Lake already has some issues with silt and the like. And I'm wondering, environmental impact statements, is that something that generally is not required kind of statewide? Or why, and, and like, things like traffic studies? Those are not part of the process?
Traffic studies are, but they're triggered by a certain number of, of, what do you call it?
It's a national study.
What?
It's a national study.
On national traffic statistics. And the city's threshold for development that triggers a traffic study is 100 trips per hour.
And so that's, that's, if it met that requirement, it would automatically trigger a traffic study. This does not. I believe the envi, you know, we, the environmental side of it, that could potentially be discussed in future things. However, that particular topic gets a little bit gray with some state and some federal standards. And I think that one, even if we chose to go down that road, would be challenging in the future because of some of the quirks involved at that. We have discussed that, but it, it looked a little messy.
The city does have land disturbance regulations that require that silt not be discharged from a construction site or a development project. And there are those local and state permits that are required for land disturbance activities, whether that's clearing or construction. And there are requirements at the local and state level for long-term maintenance of those facilities to assure that those discharges do not happen.
Okay, so that's something that the builders is, that's his requirement?
Yes.
And something that is considered as they are...
Yes, that is a requirement regardless of whether there is a plat as a part of the process or not. If there is land disturbance that takes place on already-platted land or on land that is yet to be platted, those same requirements are in place.
And one other, you say that the developer is here?
Yes, yes.
And who is the developer?
Berg Builders LLC is the developer, I believe, the...
And do we have representatives here?
So the managing person is right there, Justin Harris.
Okay. And I'm just wondering if there's a possibility for conversation between people like Christian, who is president of the Homeowners Association? Maybe we could do something really unique here and be a little proactive about this and maybe open some discussions between those who are concerned and the developer and see if we could create a, a more friendly relationship instead of an adversarial relationship? Obviously, that's not your responsibility, but...
I think that'd be a great idea, though.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Barb. Anybody else?
My name is Hank Hayman. It's my wife Marilyn, she's gonna get up here too.
For a lot of reasons, I'm concerned about what's, what is happening here. What these people have come up here and said has been eye-opening for me. Marilyn and I lost her son Todd 10 years ago, and we set up a foundation. And that foundation, what we felt was really important and would be important to Todd would be to get Lions Lake back where it used to be. And it wasn't just because of what we did, it's because of what a lot of people have done. The Lions Lake Initiative, and lots of people in the Lions Lake area, a long time ago, were concerned about Lions Lake. And in the last 10 years, it's come a long way. And, and we're awfully proud of that. I know what's gonna happen to this lake. Blank runs downhill. I know where all the silt and sediment is gonna end up. That is important to me. It's not nearly as important to me as the safety of people who are gonna be going up and down Main Street. Nearly as important as what's gonna happen in the Southwest Estates area where Marilyn and I used to live. It's gonna be different. It's gonna be a lot different. And so, and it's gonna be expensive. So when you start talking about people and families and you start talking about expenses and you talk about the number-one problem is safety, I guess, I was, I was anxious to come up here tonight. I think all of these people thought it was gonna be a little different than what it is. It seems to me that really what we're saying is not gonna make a difference. And I know this. This is a reasonably bright, yeah, pretty much, right? Reasonably bright group of people. And I know that if they had known what we're dealing with now, they would have been up here doing what they needed to do to keep this from happening. I guess if I want to see, it's too late. It seems to me that it's almost a waste of time. I don't want it to be that. Barbara made a good point. Can we, can we do something and make changes proactively? I, I wish we could, but I don't like the way this is going down. Now, Marilyn, come up here. Marilyn has had concerns, of course, about the lake and Lions Lake. And she's got some other issues that I think need to be brought up.
He does this to me every time. I'm Marilyn Hayman, and I have been a Realtor for 29 years. And I've seen a lot of development happen. And generally, there is concerns always at the beginning. Once it's done, people settle in. My observations have been, it's during that development that our problems happen. We talk about silt fences. Yes, the city requires silt fences, but there's not enough manpower to go out every night and see that these silt fences are still in place. And, sorry, I'm not used to this. We've experienced this with Lake Ridge, where Country View came in, Savannah Commons came in, the silt came down into, to Lake Ridge Lake, and it was the homeowners who had to provide the funds to clean out the lake. So I guess for me, it is, if this is going to happen, what can we do to prevent further damage? Is there enough manpower to observe every night that silt fences are in place? They're already down, a lot of them are down. And that's my concern, which is secondary to safety. But that's just what I have observed over the years, and it makes an impact. And once the detention ponds are in, they probably will be sufficient, but that's a long way off.
Thank you. And thank you.
And, and Hank and Marilyn, thank you for what you guys have done in the area and, and what you've done to keep Todd's, you know, memory alive. And, you know, we, we appreciate and celebrate what you, what you guys have done, so thank you. Anybody else have any concerns? Sure, come on up.
My name is Elizabeth Viscusi, and I have, I was asked by some of the people, I handed out flyers on Jones Avenue. And I was asked by two people to comment on the fact that that was, the, the land that we're talking about was a nature conservancy sort of situation, which we have lost because of the trees. And if they are going to clearcut it, which in order to put 86 houses in there, they will have to do, we will lose a lot more than wildlife, because that will already be gone when they start construction. What will happen then after that is the retention ponds. And I heard from several people on Southwest Drive that they are concerned that the retention ponds are going to end up, the contents thereof, in their backyards. And they're concerned about this. So, and on a personal note, when the property was for sale, I was taken to look at it. And there were bald eagles in nests in the trees. They are gone now. They are federally protected. Thank you.
Anybody else? Come on up.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Roxanne Brillick. I have been a teacher in this community and continue to teach to this very day. How do I say this? I have a request of both the council and the developer that we delay action on a vote for this until the community who have been represented here have an opportunity to meet with the developer and to see if they can iron out any differences that they have and present that to the council. I also know that a lot of what we're talking about are legal issues, and I don't see our city attorney here or representative from his office to address any of those issues here at this time. I think that development is great, but as we've been pointing, been pointed out at the previous... I think that development is great, but as we've been pointing, been pointed out at the previous meeting, there are a lot of issues, both environmental, safety, and sewage that need to be addressed by the builders and the developer and the people that are most impacted in the area around the development before we sign on to this particular proposal. So again, I'm asking the council to delay action and I'm asking the developer to meet with us so that we can iron out whatever conflicts we have, so that we all are in agreement on what should happen with that acreage, be it larger lots, not clearcutting it, whatever it takes, as long as we are all on the same page and working for the betterment of our community and our environment. Thank you.
Any other concerns of note? Well, I appreciate everyone coming forward and sharing ideas and concerns and, you know, as we move through the budgeting process, you know, we'll be taking these under consideration. But please reach out if you have other ideas. Our emails and contact information is on the website. And we're here as a voice for you, we represent the entire city. But just know that not everything is a foregone conclusion. There's going to be developments throughout our community for years and years to come. And so, I would encourage you not to give up on the things you've been working on moving forward just because next time it may not be in your backyard, for example. I would encourage you to become a part of the process. Share your insights and opinions and what you've learned as a citizen firsthand with the community and be a part of the process, so I would just ask that.
I would like to make a motion to delay our vote tonight until we can get some more information. I myself don't feel comfortable saying yes or no at this point, hearing things. I understand the legalities, I understand. But I would like to make a motion to delay the vote tonight with the council. You can say something. Well, we have a motion, right? You can't talk right now.
Oh, no.
The developer, no matter what our vote is, the developer has the right to communicate with the citizens if he wants to. I mean, we're not, that's not, process isn't being stopped at this moment, correct?
I just put a motion on the floor for the council to say yes or no. I would like to delay this action tonight and maybe at another meeting, we could come to a vote.
I don't know that that's a good idea because when it comes to a vote, it's still gonna be in the administrative section of our duties. And so, we're, we still are obligated, you know, as city council members in this particular case, to look at it on paper, on the plat, does this meet the current codes? I mean, that's how we have to look at it. That work has already been done by the staff. I would encourage, you know, the working together and I'm sure Justin is a very nice guy, would be willing to have discussions about things. But I don't see it necessary to delay things. I mean, it's gonna be the same items brought forward, so.
So, okay, so I'm a new kid, so keep me from stepping on toes. But the developer, Justin, can I ask you a question, please, or two? Does he need to come up?
He's more than welcome to.
Okay.
The hot seat, Justin.
Well, no, we have never actually met in person or talked about the development. One of the concerns that I have and just like you talked through is I'm concerned about silt in Lions Lake. Okay, so I'm a pretty big advocate of park. What, what kind of plan do you think you can come up with that really assure us as a community that we're gonna keep that silt out of the lake?
Well, I can tell you, I've spent probably fifty thousand dollars with engineers so far developing this plat, going back and forth with the city, working on all these issues. And like, I'm in this community and a lot of people know me in this community, so it's kinda irritating to hear, "I'm not available," or "Why can't you just talk?" I mean, my phone number is out there everywhere, anybody can come talk to me anytime. I have, I have spoken to a couple of people who are here tonight who've come to my office with concerns and we've discussed those and I've been very open about what we're doing.
Yeah, and I wanna make sure, I didn't have any implication of that.
No, okay.
I just...
I heard a lot of it, though.
Okay.
You know, like, I haven't been hiding and I'm not from Washington DC.
You're okay. I do wanna understand that.
So, council member Holmberg, here's what I would say is, that's a concern of ours, too. And I think one thing to understand is three-fourths of our property drains to the west of Lions Lake, it goes to the creek down there. And that's the way the stormwater detention has been designed by the engineer, but that's what's happening right now. Where the water, the lowest point of that property is in the southwest corner. And so, one-fourth of that property drains towards Main Street. And so, some of that probably does go into Lions Lake right now. So our development proposal has over four acres of retention basins on it to slow down any water leaving the property, to retain it on the property and to release it at the engineer-calculated rate and through hard pipes down into, part of it's gonna go into Lions Lake, like I said, about a fourth of it. And a fourth of it is gonna go west, where it's going right now, into the creek that's west of Lions Lake. And so, that hard pipe is gonna prevent it from picking up sediment. So my opinion, take it for what it's worth, I'm not an engineer, but having looked at this, having walked this property, you can go out there right now and see, we haven't done anything yet there, except for tear down the house that was there and the outbuildings. But you can go down there right now and see that there are, there is sediment on the park board ground southwest of our property. And I think that what we are going to do is gonna make it better.
And I appreciate that on the final. My concern as much was during construction.
So during construction.
Because that's when you do all the disrupting, trucks drive off, it's all through.
No, absolutely.
And that was what Marilyn's...
And that's part of, that is part of the process. And so, you know, silt fencing is there and there are rock checks there and stuff. But again, all we've done is cleaned some overgrowth up and we've tore down some houses. So we haven't really altered anything. But we put that up there because we don't want anything rolling down towards Lions Lake or we don't want anything not where it should be. So during the construction process, DNR has regulations about silt fencing and rock checks and retention and we will comply with all of those.
Justin, do you mind if I clarify something real quick?
Yeah.
So, when the, we're, the council's looking at the entirety of the plat map. But the construction is gonna be done in phases, so the entirety of the ground is not going to be disturbed all at once, is that correct?
So, we have not determined how to phase that out entirely. We've set, in our preliminary plat, we have four phases set on there. So we've not made a determination whether we're gonna do Phase One first and then wait and do Phase Two or if we're gonna do Phase One and Two at the same time. So, you know, we'll make that, it's gonna depend on financing, it's gonna depend on a number of factors, cost. So the costs widening Main Street and putting sidewalk, you know, down in front of property that doesn't belong to us is part of this deal. And that is, that's very expensive. And so, that expense alone increased the density of our project or else it could not be done. So, to answer your question, I don't know exactly how it's gonna be phased out, but we will take, you know, the responsible steps each part of the way and comply with all the requirements to make sure we do as good as we can. And I believe in the end, when this gets done, it's gonna be better than what it is now. So right now, I mean, part of the problem is over there. So I hear this is a huge development, it's smaller than Spring Ridge, it's smaller than Southwest Estates, it has less houses than both of those developments. Either one of those developments has stormwater detention or stormwater, engineered stormwater systems. And so, you know, I'm not yelling about that, I'm just saying, you know, that is part of the problem that we deal with is all that runoff there, too. But we're gonna handle that and we're gonna comply with the current codes. As far as safety, we're widening the street there in front of our property and all the way down to Southwest Avenue, which is not in front of our property. And we're putting sidewalk, there's gonna be about a mile of sidewalks put in up Main Street and through our development. And so, that's part of the safety solution, that's not part of the problem. A wider Main Street is gonna be better and a sidewalk that goes up Main Street. There's nothing stopping any other of our neighbors from putting sidewalks in front of their properties or widening the street in front of their properties. Well, what stops you from doing that is it's expensive. So it's expensive for us, it would be very expensive for them, I understand that. But at some point, if you say, "I gotta improve the intersection of Clark and Main Street and I gotta go up and improve the intersection of Clark and McGuire because of this traffic, everybody's on these streets," you know, you just make development impossible in your city. And I think we need to avoid that and be reasonable in our response. And I appreciate the mayor's remarks because I understand why there may be confusion after the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I personally felt like that was, that vote was illegal because, you know, our, our, well, I don't wanna say illegal, like somebody should go to jail, I just mean, I don't feel that was the correct result because our plat does comply with all the subdivision regulations. We've taken a lot of time in collaboration with the city staff to get it there and spent a lot of money. And so, it's not a rezoning request, it's not a special permit request. It's like applying for a driver's license, you pay your fee, you meet all the requirements, your plat gets issued, or your plat gets approved. It's not like I'm asking you to change something. Like, if I wanted to build apartments there, I can understand, everybody could have their comments and maybe you just go, "Ah, that's not what I think is best," and you vote against it. But this is an administrative proceeding. There's no discretion for the council to deny a plat that meets all the subdivision requirements.
I will tell you that I understand that now, I certainly didn't a month ago on it, and I can understand that and I'm a big fan of property rights. The, you know, you buy it, you fit the requirements, it's yours, right? The thing I think that most of the folks that I've talked to, because I've talked to many people, or most of the folks I've talked with that have contacted me are not in that area, it's the community. And so, I think that part of energy is based around that we have a gem of a lake, as we've talked about, and we have significant issue with the street. And so, I will grant you its administrative precision and I know where that has to go. However, as council, I think it also means that if we have zoned something and agreed to it, we need to seriously consider streets and intersections and the lake and et cetera. And I'm not saying that's the developer...
No, I love that lake, too, and I absolutely like the service and I wanna do everything we can.
I'm just saying that as a council, I think we need to have that conversation.
Now, if the people who owned the property all the way down there had a strong inkling, isn't there a city program to help people put sidewalks in front of their property if it's on the correct side of the street? But if, well, I'm just asking about the sidewalk. So if there was a property owner in Warrensburg that lived on this street who really felt that it was a safety hazard and wanted to have sidewalks down that street, they could opt voluntarily to put those sidewalks. There's nothing that we are doing or in the ordinance that would preclude them from doing that, is that correct? So...
The program that Nolan's talking about is even where the city participates financially with that, so it's kind of a...
A partnership.
What is it called? Just a cost share program. Any other questions for Justin?
Let me ask something real quick, there's a BAT ordinance from April to November that you can't move trees. It's a federal law.
BAT, a BAT ordinance?
A BAT ordinance. I talked to NomNoster, and obviously you're going to and I'm all for development, don't get me wrong, I just want to make clear, talked to the conservation at NomNoster and there was a BAT ordinance, it's a federal law, that you can't go in tomorrow or the next day.
Excuse me, that's on federal state projects, it's not on local development, it's not a requirement for the government, there's federal money or state money involved in the project and that ordinance is in effect.
Because I asked him specifically, there was a person in Warrensburg that wants to do a development and there's trees and they said from April to November that...
So there's a lot of misinformation about that. We've talked with the state, the head of the state forestry department about that. If there's federal or state funds involved, then that is an issue during that timeframe. And also, certain designated areas around the country where there are like no nesting spots for this kind of BAT, which Warrensburg has no spots like that.
I just, like I said, I just talked to a conservation at NomNoster this afternoon, Newton, and that's what he said, so I just...
What does it do to you, because Robin put out a motion, what's that do to you if it's delayed?
It costs me money, I mean, it costs me money to delay it here. It costs me a lot of time to get this done. And then, you know, you only have so much time to get things done, construction-wise, finance-wise, construction plans, going back and forth, so, you know, delays are very costly.
I appreciate you letting me ask you some questions. Like I said, I'm trying to come up speed real fast here.
No problem.
There's someone else that wanted to point their hand just yet, do you want to do the motion first?
Mr. Dr. Staub, yes.
Are you still taking questions? One?
Briefly.
In truth, I just, I'm trying to imagine what the road, Main Street's gonna look like and perhaps the developer could touch on this, you know, in terms of how wide it needs to be to accommodate all the traffic, because that's a real concern of mine, that is a real concern of others. And it's interesting, we're talking about property rights that this developer has and it seems to me that when you spread out that road to accommodate all that traffic, you might be encroaching on other people's property rights. And I don't know, but in all the way up Main, there are some houses very close to the road. And are we envisioning down the road some eminent domain proceedings? I mean, realistically, and I'm asking this question, how big does that road need to be? And when does, the council keeps talking about technically within the law. Well, that would suggest that we've got everything in place, that we know how this traffic is gonna proceed or the expenses to this community are gonna be for expanding those roads. And I'm hearing very high numbers there. And then the environmental impact. This idea that it's not required, it's not required, that's true. But doesn't this council have an obligation to know what this is gonna do to Lions Lake? I mean, come on, you know, you can do all those technicalities all you want, but what are the real impacts here? I really do want, I can envision a very, it would have to be a very wide road. And I would hate to be a property owner along that road because I think you may be encroaching on other people's property rights. That is, that's something I haven't heard anything about. And so, yes, reasonable development, but the number eighty-six, when I heard it, I, as I said, I go down that area all the time, it just doesn't sound right. It sounds too much, too much that you, that as a council, I'm hearing a lot of unintended consequences here that I don't think we'd work through. I really don't. That, and encroaching on other people's property rights, too.
I know on most of our streets, we have easements. Is there an easement already in place on Main?
Yeah, right away, it exists with South Main now, it's various, kinda incrementally, there's a forty-foot wide at the south end, gets up towards Jones District, it's forty-five feet wide, gets up toward the intersection, actually, toward the area where Russ Coleman lives, fifty-five feet wide that way, ideally sixty-foot wide right away, which needs an end. We do not go in and take property out of turn from property, we pay for any, there's no eminent domain as far as what street projects are done, so we negotiate for additional right of way when that's taken in there. But ideally, sixty-foot right of way is what needs to be in place to put the proper, put the street in there.
And I think most of the property owners in that area want safety, that's what we all want here. So I don't see anybody, especially the west side of the road is, you know, lots of space there And if somebody else was assisting financially, you know, like Rosalina right there, she would be all for, I'm sure, a wider, safer road with sidewalks and things like that. So I foresee that being an issue. You have a question, sir?
Yeah, so, my name's Clayton Johnson, I live on Main Street there. So you're saying by, we're going to increase the required easements all the way down Main, you know, most of Main Street, where this is being developed, where, you know, for landowners, I mean, talking about property, I mean, safety's one issue, but talking about landowners, you're gonna be giving yourselves easements to another ten to fifteen-foot of road on each side?
We're not able, we're not able to give ourselves anything anymore.
Right, or it's gonna be required by city code?
We're not talking about eminent domain and taking anything. That's not on the table, and that's not, that's not what we're talking about. We are discussing, most of the concerns that we heard tonight was about the width of Main Street and the lack of sidewalk for safety. And so I think, what's that?
They're, they're, you're widening the road by increasing the city requirements, which is taking people's property.
There's already, there's already easements in place.
They're there for forty, but not sixty, that's being discussed.
Correct. So if we wanted to go to sixty, we would have to buy it or twenty feet from you.
Then it wouldn't come off, would it?
Yeah, it's, I'm kinda getting down in the weeds a little bit on that. Yes, Rhonda?
Does the city have an estimate of what it's gonna cost the city to widen the road, not the part that the developer will do? Does the city have an estimate?
We have not put it out to bid or anything like that. This is just a, an initial discussion, and the city's not, in this case, obligated to do any of that. We are accepting public opinion, that if that's what you guys think is, is top priority in our entire city, we're in the budgeting process now, that if we choose to reallocate some resources, now is a great time to have this discussion, to get this feedback, rather than six months from now, we're gonna be waiting years. And so, the sooner we can become aware, the sooner we can act on everyone in the city's behalf to make it as safe as possible with the finite resources. I'm seeing lots of hands. Let's just do a couple more questions, and we're kinda getting in the weeds, it's getting late. I did this out of a courtesy. Yes?
Ms. Marshall, I'm just curious, are they selling lots, or are they going to build a house on a lot and then sell the house?
I don't know if they're building spec houses. Justin, do you care to comment, or are you still trying to figure it out?
We haven't decided that.
Yeah, so, I'm, whichever's easiest and fastest and most, you know, it depends on lots of things. Yes, ma'am, your question back there?
Yeah, once again, I'm Roxanne, and I do appreciate the councilwoman who suggested that there is a delay. And I am not trying to stop people from developing, I don't like wasting money, either taxpayers or my personal money. But I think we need to have an open and honest discussion with the developer to understand what he is planning, what the city is going to plan to do before we proceed any further with approving this spot.
Unfortunately, I have made this part of the discussion tonight, but the city is not required to do that. This was me calling an audible and saying, "I want everyone to make sure that you have a voice, and let's try to take, harness some concerns and frustration, and try to morph it into something that could possibly be positive for our community."
The concern that I brought up is that this seems to be primarily a legal and administrative issue, and we have no one here from the city's.
This is our city attorney.
Our city attorney's right here.
This is he?
Yeah.
And, we, trust me, we have, all of your city council members have received more legal advice in the last month than, than most of us care to have anymore, I can assure you. And I can assure you that all of us have been, have all received questions and comments and concerns, and read the Facebook posts, and, and all of those things. We have all stood onsite, just a second, Matt, just hang on a second. We have all stood on site, together, all five of us, with city manager. We've all stood in the intersections, we've all stood at the water problems on the west side there at High Drive and Southwest Estates, right there by Marshall's house coming down. We've stood at the intersection of Southwest Drive and, and Main. We have deliberated and discussed and talked and been coached, all of this stuff behind the scenes. So I just want everyone to be aware of that, and we have discussed possibilities of, of how to go about things in a cost-effective manner, to do what's best for the community, and how to address possibly some safety measures at intersections, and, and lots of those things. However, it's, it's my opinion that delaying, I didn't want to give the false sense that we still don't have an obligation to do this administrative task, you know, tonight, that it's going to cost the developer money. And right now, he is spending money outside of the property lines. He's widening the road in front of his, his development. Currently, he is taking that from his development, another three hundred and thirty-some feet, I think, all the way to Lions, all the way to Southwest Drive. He's widening the road all the way to there for aesthetics, as well as hard piping all of that water to the lake, so it's not picking up all the sediment all across there that it is now. He's even building a sidewalk on top of that, outside of his property lines to take it. He truly wants this to be better than it, than it was before. And I think, you know, if we delay things, he's not required to do all of those things. I would hate to see some of those positive things get pulled, because he's not able to financially make things go. He's gotta fulfill the obligations by, by ordinance. Some of these extras that he's doing are not required. So I, I would be concerned that by delaying, not only is that not what we're here to do tonight, but it could potentially not be what's best for the area, in my opinion, just in, in full disclosure of, of what's going on behind the scenes. And Matt, you had a, Matt, Sergeant.
I have for Southwest.
Yeah, so, and the property we just talked about is your property.
Yeah, my property, and I would love to have that sidewalk in that river, so I think it's great, that is awesome. It is, it is a little dangerous down there, if people are walking, and it's gonna be awesome to have that sidewalk, and an extra mile of actual sidewalk inside there for those people to walk, that are walking that, plus the Lions Lake and enjoying it.
Yeah, that's getting you to Lions Lake, that's getting you to Toddham and Trail, that's getting you to see the fountain. I mean, that's getting you down where you wanna be. So anyway, I just would caution, delaying, not only is it not necessary, because we're not gathering opinion here, like I expressed at the very beginning, you know, we are solely doing an administrative responsibility to, you know, check, is, are all the boxes checked, and moving it forward. I just, out of courtesy, wanted to attempt to bring people more together, and to get your ideas, and, and to make sure that you had a voice and felt a part of this, as well as to urge you to continue to be a part of this in the future, as we develop what Warrensburg comes into. But my recommendation is to either retract your proposal, or we vote on it.
I would like to see a vote please, and I made the motion.
Anybody else have any discussion on this item?
The motion is to.
So the motion is to table it until, at this point, it's gonna be middle of June.
And this is?
This is, this is to delay, to table this until next time.
Next council meeting. Brooks?
No.
Jacobs?
No.
Holmberg?
No.
Allen?
No.
Lund?
No. So now, we've, we've heard lots of, of things, and that we will, will use in other areas as we draft budgets and things moving forward. But now, let's, let's go ahead and talk about the item at hand, the other business of approving the preliminary plat of Lions Gate Lots One through eighty-six, Trex A and B. I would entertain a motion. I'll make a motion to approve.
Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes. So that vote was an administrative vote, confirming that they have checked all of the boxes and can legally, you know, proceed to the next step inside of the plating process, as far as what's moving forward. Okay. Next, on the items of other business, is Warrensburg Main Street Farm-to-Table Open Container Application. So an ordinance suspending the provisions of Sections Three dash four for certain special events, June eighth, two thousand eighteen, I meant to say two thousand nineteen, pursuant to Sections Three dash fourteen B of the Code of Ordinances.
I couldn't hear most of that, if you wanna just wait until they're, yeah. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear anything you said.
Item ten-two.
This has been the alcohol thing.
All right, moving on to other business, item ten-two, Warrensburg Main Street Farm-to-Table Open Container Application. An ordinance suspending the provisions of Section Three dash fourteen for certain special events, June eighth, two thousand nineteen, pursuant to Sections Three dash fourteen B of the Code of Ordinances. Chief Lockhart?
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, this is a request from Warrensburg Main Street to have open containers on Market Street as part of their farm-to-table. There is a map in there as well. I do need to point out that in the title, it's, the date's listed incorrectly, it's actually June fifth.
Okay, so June fifth, two thousand nineteen, I changed the year.
The year was wrong, too.
Yeah, June fifth, twenty nineteen.
Got it.
They'll be on Market Street between Holden and they'll go down to one twenty-seven East Market Street. They're gonna use the parking lot on the southeast corner to do the prep work, and then the tables will be in the middle of the street. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I think this is a great event. I attended it last year. I'm happy to see that they moved it there. I think the courthouse is gonna provide some much-needed shade in that area, still off of the Main Street in case fire needs to get through. But I think that, I think that's a good idea to move that there, and, you know, maybe even a little later in the evening, I think we'll check the sun, and I think it should be just perfect that the courthouse makes it nice and shady, so we're not baking out there again. But it was a great event.
Do we just need a motion?
Just a motion to.
Motion to approve.
Well, this is a second reading, that is an ordinance.
Move it to second, second reading, by the title, right?
Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
This is an ordinance suspending the provisions of Section Three dash fourteen for certain special events, June fifth, twenty nineteen, pursuant to Section Three dash fourteen B of the Code of Ordinances. This is for adoption or rejection. Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes. Next on the item of discussion is discussion of downtown trees. We had Mr. Schur on the agenda last time. Unfortunately, he was not able to attend due to a family friend passing. I'm so sorry to hear that, but would love for you to come forward and, and share some insights with us. I, I gave a brief synopsis of what we had talked about last time, but I think you have a special way about you, Randy, that you can make, make sure it resonates with everyone. So I kinda let everybody know that conversation started with you noticing some changes in the downtown trees, and had finally got to a point that you were concerned, and got some of us involved, and so if you could share.
I walked out of the store one morning, and there was a city worker concreting the holes where trees once were planted. I get it, there's a lot of problems with the trees at times. I believe that the lack of maintenance is most of the problem with the trees. Lack of communication with who is to take care of the trees. I believe that most of the property owners that have trees out in front of them would see to it that their trees are taken care of, if they are their trees, or if it's made into some type of, who takes care of them, who controls them? I only have parts and pieces to this, but I'm told that on any new trees, and I've, I've witnessed every tree put in at some point in time. I was a part of the first phase, the second phase, I've seen them all. I've seen them go in the right way, and I've seen them go in the wrong way. You don't put a tree on Pine Street that's as big around as your pinky and expect it to spin one week in the ground. It's not gonna happen. I've seen, I've been told that we can't have this tree, or we can't do that tree, or it's, it's this, or it's that. We're not gonna take care of this, meaning the city, we're not gonna take care of it, it's gotta be somebody else's problem. I disagree with that. I feel like the city requires a property owner to put in X amount of trees when they're putting in a subdivision, or redoing their lots and things. I can't, side ordinances, I just, I'm told that that's how it is. But if the city won't take care of their own, the three over here at the, at the, along the police station, I don't believe those really belong to the downtown, per se, but they're dead. And I, I was told that we were concreting the holes for a safety issue. Well, a dead tree is just as safety problem as a hole in the ground. But those trees are still there, they were there about seven o'clock when I walked up here. So I, I feel like there's a much better way to approach the trees than, I was told we were concreting them for a safety thing. Well, you know, those holes have been there for, ever since the, the trees that were as big around as your pinky were yanked out of there. It wasn't a problem, until all of a sudden it's a problem. So I think there's a better fix, and I do believe that there has been conversation between Main Street and the city to begin to get it fixed. But the conservations that we walked the, the streets with the other day, even said that he would, study after study after study, would prove that trees in downtowns were better for business. People wanted to be in those types of downtowns, as opposed to just a barren one. And again, look down Pine Street, it looks totally different than if you look up Holden Street, or down in front of City Hall, right, right past here. These trees have been taken care of. Somebody's done something to them since they were put in. Why? Why just these? Why not all over? So I just think there's a fix, and I don't like, concrete's not gonna grow. And I don't believe it was as big a safety issue as it was made out to be, per se, but plant a tree and put some in it. I know Main Street's working on it, and that's a great thing, but we gotta, we gotta get rid of the concrete. And, totally off the subject, I commend you, Casey, for how you've handled that crowd. And I didn't wanna get lynched, but here's the problem. Why can't those people, and it's, it's age-old in Warrensburg, I've seen it forever, when the hot button issue is over, everybody rolls.
I've asked that question for three years, four years now.
So if you can't be a part, and then they quote me, put it in the paper, whatever you got, but if you can't be a part of the solution, shut up.
So, we, we want those people to be engaged.
I get it, but they need to be engaged on a different level, it's not after the cows are out. Don't close the gate then, or try to, and you can't move the target.
I, I get it.
If it's legal, it's legal, if it's not, it's not.
Oh, we see it.
And I've been on that side of it, so I, I get it.
So, so the tree discussion was started from Randy's frustration. It has morphed into many discussions, many meetings, tree experts, city tree folks, Main Street, tree. Main Street, uh, Tree Board, uh, the Missouri Department of Conservation Tree Expert. I think we're going on, what, meeting three with him, uh, Wednesday morning, eight AM, if you guys want to join us. Um, come on down. Uh, and so I think ultimately the frustration and the observations from Randy has spurred some people to think about trees. And we've taken lessons learned from the past in how we planted and how we maintained and the type of trees and, and how much salt we put on the concrete and lots of things that we have learned, um, moving forward that I think, uh, we will have trees again downtown. Um, we all can agree that, uh, beautiful downtown is what we want. We know that people linger longer, stay longer, uh, spend more money, uh, all of which is a downtown. I just came from, spent all week last week in Winchester, Virginia, and walked their, uh, town that's over two-hundred years old and, and, uh, downtown revitalization and trees were beautiful. And that's why people were, were down, downtown. And, uh, so I, I believe it works and, but right now we are working on a plan, uh, that was instigated by Randy, so thanks for your.
I'm not a tree hugger, but I test one.
We, we appreciate you bringing it. You, 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 you gave us the kick in the pants to, uh, to get more done. And so now we're having conversations on not just how to plant trees, but how do we make better decisions and get a plan moving forward so we don't just plant them and plant them and plant them and they die and over and over and over and we get frustrated? But how do we preserve these trees and care for them the way they should, uh, to make sure that our downtown is beautiful?
But, but we're gonna get frustrated and they are gonna get broken and they are gonna.
But we have a plan and funding set in place.
Exactly. But we can't just keep, well, that one's gone, so we'll just concrete it over and we'll hope for the best on the next one.
I, I agree. So we, we are working, working together, uh, coalition, and, uh, thanks for all your efforts, you know, from the city, from Main Street, from the Tree Board and, and Randy and others that have joined us, uh, during that discussion. Uh, next on other business is to approve veterinary services contracts presented by Joe.
Mr. Mayor, member of the council, uh, since December, uh, Dr. Erin Edging, um, has been providing vet services for the shelter and the animals on an interim basis. She is going to be leaving, um, this summer. She is a part of a military family and they've been relocated to San Antonio. Um, this is required staff to look for, um, so, uh, a good replacement, um, for vet services. And, um, we have done so and got two pretty good arrangements in place. Um, and we're presenting, I put a packet of, of one of the contracts in front of me and then, um, it was included in this agenda, the, the one before. Um, so they are ready for your approval, um, and that's what staff will recommend. If you have any questions, please let me know and we'll be happy to answer them.
So I think I did see in there that the city's not gonna pay for any of the veterinarian bills, or they are. Is that what it is?
We're responsible for all the veterinarian bills.
Okay.
I move to approve.
Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes. Uh, next, item eleven, appearances to the council not listed on the agenda. We might have a whole list of folks that were here to, to speak on the, uh, Lions Gate issues. Is it a long list?
There's three.
Okay.
But I think that's all.
I'll, I'll call them out by name and we'll confirm that. Uh, Christian Cutler, he, uh, already spoke and, uh, so we heard from him. Uh, Roxanne Braylick, uh, we heard from her, and then Jim Staub, uh, we've already heard from him. So all three of those were, uh, on the Lions Gate, uh, issues. Um, mayoral appointments, uh, we're gonna wait, uh, on that, still deliberating on a few. We made the appointments for the council members, um, but we will wait until next month and we'll be bringing, uh, right, we'll be bringing several, uh, forward, uh, for, for various boards all at one time. Uh, next item miscellaneous matters from mayor and/or city council. Anybody have any, anything for the betterment of the cause?
I have to agree, you did a very good job, Casey, and very proud of you.
Yeah.
I'm glad I wasn't, I'm glad I wasn't here.
Thank you, I was concerned of opening a can of worms, um, it wasn't necessary, but I felt.
You did give them a chance to talk about it.
I felt it was necessary and, and an opportunity to harness those folks while they're here. We hope that they continue to be engaged, but, um, I wanted to encourage that.
Well, I, I wanna second that because that was one of the more critical things for me is that folks got to speak and they did.
Yeah.
And I obviously seriously considered the delay motion. I thought about that a moment, but they had a good chance and I was glad to hear it and your explanation of where we were at, because I wasn't certain of that even this morning.
So. We got, we got a good legal lesson here at closed session.
Communicating that out, um, communicating that out is very, very important. We'll visit the safety stuff.
Yeah, yeah, we, we know what to learn from that. So anyways, thank you for mentioning that. That's worse.
We won't have another one until June.
Yeah, so let's go ahead and talk about that, is that.
Yeah, we need, we need direction from council, what we would like to do. So typically we meet, you know, twice a month. The next regular council meeting would fall on Memorial Day, which typically in the past we've just chosen, because we had been so busy with budget and everything else, it's pretty much been your due time this month. So in the past, we have not had a second council meeting in May and allowed the observance of the holiday until uninterrupted, but, uh, we have new council, so it is a decision of the council. We can reschedule that to a date that is not on the holiday if you choose or we can, you can choose to have a council meeting on the holiday and we will be here under your direction. But, uh, also at this point, we do not have anything in the works right now to be under consideration for a council meeting that day. Um, but we can find something if you would like to.
So do attempt to be the next meeting.
If we don't have any pressing that would be, not, not evidence for the city, I would recommend we see each other again, uh, second Monday in June. Everybody agrees on that? Need a motion or anything?
This is the closest thing I have to friends.
You have to have your, you have to have your, your first, your first meeting is, is set by ordinance. Your second is just, just happens as a matter of tradition.
So we don't need to do anything official?
I have a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to not have the meeting, the end of, the second meeting in May.
Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Afraid to say yes.
No, I.
What am I saying yes to, right?
I haven't left the other one yet.
This is to move the next meeting to June, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Had me worried for a second. City manager report.
I do have a few things. Uh, first and foremost, uh, as often happens with time, things change. We have a couple of key retirements, um, this month and some other changes that, uh, this will be the final council meeting for a couple of key individuals. So, uh, there will be a retirement ceremony for Gunner, our K-nine officer at the police department on Wednesday. Chief Kushner has announced his retirement at the end of this month, but we will be having a retirement banquet for him this Friday. You'd like to have that on your calendar as well. And then also, um, Joe Hackney, who became as a management intern, has been serving as our interim shelter manager, has accepted a position as a city administrator for the city of Valley Falls, Kansas, and this will be his last council meeting as well. So I wanted to publicly express my gratitude to these individuals from K-nine for their faithful service to our community. I believe our community is better for these individuals having been here in their service and they will be missed. Following up with that, um, I have asked Assistant Chief, Noel Oxley, to serve as the interim fire chief in the meantime between retirement and the point that we have chosen a new fire chief in there on duty. And I appreciate his willingness to step in at this time of need for our department and our community. Uh, the final thing I have is just a, an FYI. I will be doing the annual trip to Las Vegas to attend the International Council Shopping Centers Recon Conference. This is the, uh, Super Bowl Conference of Retail Development and, uh, we've been partnering with Retail Coach and have set up some appointments in advance. I think it'll be a very productive trip this year and we're excited to have some conversations with some developers and hoping to, uh, bring them to our community and improve our community and make it better. But I will be out of the office, leaving Sunday and be back Thursday as part of that. So if you have any last minute thoughts of a company to reach out to, I'm sure I can probably find them there. I have nothing else. I have no need for a closed session tonight either, after the, after the regular session.
Is, is Gunner retirement or the police station or who's here?
Here, he'll be here at five thirty.
Okay, that's my thought. Doctor finance report? Dog cake.
So, um, staff has been working on the budget. Uh, we do have the, um, employee, the personnel numbers in, uh, their budget had a three percent increase, uh, from last year. Uh, we do have a significant deficit that we're gonna have to work down, so, uh, here in the future we'll be coming to council to talk about certain items that we wanna keep up in the budget and what we wanna do maybe to, to work that, uh, number down. Uh, sales tax for the month of April, worked down again. Had some, a, a couple significant, uh, down points, but overall, we are, we are basically on par with budget at this point. We're down a little bit in sales tax for budget, but the rest of the numbers are, are, are pretty solid. We still are projecting maybe, uh, a one percent de, decrease from what we budgeted, so. That's about it, so I, uh.
I have nothing additional.
Joe? Doyle, I'm kinda get you in, get you in the rotation here? Jill? Anything pressing for Main Street?
I just want to thank the city for their support for our Burrisoff concert that was, uh, last Friday, I believe. And, um, we appreciate your support on that. We have a great turnout and also to the, um, Slidl over there and his crew that were instrumental in getting us set up and ready to go. And also we had a whole bunch of the, um, fire department guys that were instrumental in getting us, um, torn down and put back away so that we can go home in time of winter. So I appreciate the team effort, for everybody supporting Main Street and the segment that we had last week.
That's fine. Suzanne?
I just wanna say thank you very much to Harold, city manager, for giving, uh, chamber members during a recent luncheon and a date of what's happening in the city. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it. And we were fortunate to have Congresswoman Hartzler in town for lunch today. Some great questions and dialogues, and thank you for all that attended.
I got fairly, they've just already shut the door.
My last meeting, uh, my appreciation for being allowed to serve the last almost forty years and, uh, I'll be around.
Thank you for your service and you have to the city council and, and, uh, we're sad to see you go, but also greater patches.
Don't have anything.
Done?
I've talked quite enough.
I didn't even know you were here either.
Coming in late like that.
I think we need a picture of him on the webpage now.
We need to put him on the website.
Everybody else good, anything else?
I'm all good.
All right, anybody wanna make a motion to adjourn? We don't need to. Don't have to do that.
But don't leave, we're just pictures taken.
Oh, okay. Please don't leave. And, uh, thank you everybody for your, uh, participation and, and for being patient through such a long, uh, long meeting, but it was great to get everyone feedback. Thank you. We're adjourned.
Yeah, we'll leave, okay, all right.